She can't see, yeah. She's good. Ready?
We're gonna start.
I call to order the business meeting of the Beaverton School Board on October 24th to 2023 at 7:00 PM. I just want to note that all, we have six board members present today. Susan Greenberg is excused and Sunita Garg is on, online. So, welcome, everybody. We'll start with our land acknowledgement. The Beaverton School District would like to acknowledge that our schools sit on the land of the Tualatin Kalapuiya people, and we recognize we are not the first teachers and learners of this land, and that there's still a native presence here today, including the nine Oregon tribes. Land acknowledgements continue to evolve, and we will continue to consult with our local partners, local tribal partners, as we consider how to honor the original stewardship of this land. We'll go into our agenda review. We will begin with reviewing the agenda. Board members, if anyone wants to propose making a change to the agenda or pull an item out of the consent agenda, this is the time to do so. Are there any changes to the agenda? Would anyone like to make any requests? Okay. Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Let's see. Tonight, we have some recognitions. Three individuals for their outstanding achievement and contributions to the Beaverton School District and the community. Rohan Shaw, Serenia Gonzalez, and Diane Fitzpatrick are here today, and we will be celebrating you. We'll start first with Rohan Shaw. Rohan, sorry. Rohan, would you please come up to the presenter's table at the front of the room while the board member, Melissa Garg, Dr., oh my gosh, Dr. Melissa Potter, tell us this a little bit more.
Welcome. The district recognizes Rohan Shaw for his outstanding achievement and contributions to the Beaverton School District and the community. Rohan is a junior at Sunset High School. He's working to encourage a love of tennis and increase confidence in local area youth with his nonprofit, Smashing Barriers. The aim is to change and advance the lives of young people through tennis while helping remove racial, economic, and social barriers to success in the sport. Let's take a minute to watch a short news story from KPTV.
It's got to end about the name of tennis and new ones.
Also, for the girls, Kevin Lynn brings us this week's high school spotlight on Smashing Barriers, a nonprofit organization, was co-founded by Sunset High School's Rohan Shaw and Gia Metta from Gatlin Gable to give kids equitable access to the sport.
Tennis kind of gave us this motivation, this ability of work ethic, or this idea of focus and how to like accomplish all those things on and off the court. That's kind of one of the reasons why we started Smashing Barriers, so we can arm these new students and youth with the knowledge that they need to succeed in school and in life with tennis.
Our mission statement is to change young lives by removing the
social, economic, and racial barriers that surround tennis. Tennis just rejuvenated us, and we were like, wait a minute, why can't we provide the same sort of joy to other students and other youth?
We noticed that tennis is a sport that requires a lot of things that you need, like equipment, clothing, shoes, and especially lessons and coaches, and we wanted to give kids who couldn't get that the opportunity to play something that we love. We host free tennis clinics at Portland Tennis and Education once a month on Saturday, and a lot of these kids show up and they're so excited to start playing, and it just makes me feel so good that someone shares love of the same sport that I do.
Tennis also has a large social benefit, connecting with people who also enjoy doing the same things as you. And that's one of the other things we want to provide with Smashing Barriers, a place where kids can connect.
For our weekend clinics at Portland Tennis and Education, we provide the balls, the rackets, and they just have to come there and play.
All they need to bring is a good attitude, a good attitude, a willingness to learn, and just a hunger to play. It's just about being one with the rest of the community around us, helping out those in need, and empowering kids with sports and tennis, because at the end of the day, sports are for everyone of any ability, of any age.
It feels really good that we've brought in all these kids, and just like seeing the smiles on their faces after we've held our tennis clinics, and it just feels good to see them so happy. We've connected with people in San Diego and
Florida and Arizona about starting new chapters and, you know, spreading our message, spreading these life lessons that we can give to the youth. I really want this to expand the horizons of Oregon, and, you know, mainly in the Pacific Northwest and the rest of the United States. I think kids everywhere should be able to access the sport of tennis, play the sport of tennis, and gain life lessons that Gia and I learned, they're planning. Very nice.
Thank you, Rohan. Would you like to say a few words about Smashing Barriers?
Yes, I would. I'd really like to thank you guys for recognizing me for this award, as it's just, it really shows all the hard work from our team and all of our state and here, and it really uses this as like a launchpad to even better for the future. So, I would once again really like to thank you guys for recognizing me for this award.
Do you want to come up? And if your family wants to come up with you, we can have a picture with everybody. In your, all your family that's here, come on up.
Thank you so much. The next district recognition goes to Serenia Gonzalez. Serenia, please make your way to the presenter's table. Serenia Gonzalez has been named the migrant educator of the year by the Oregon Department of Education. Serenia was selected for this prestigious award for her distinguished work as a Beaverton School District's migrant education program pre-K specialist. In this role, Serenia has been an outstanding supporter of our pre-K students, their families, and Beaverton overall migrant education program. So, congratulations, Serenia, well deserved. Can you tell us a little bit more about your work and the award?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I, I always believe that when people are given the tools, the opportunities to thrive, and I feel like the migrant education program has done that for me as an employee and as well as my students and my families. And the migrant education program within the multilingual department is so fundamental for our students who don't have access to equitable education, who travel a lot, and I just feel so honored to, like, be able to get to do that work day by day. It's been a passion of mine, I've been doing it for a while, and so I, I really do feel honored to be able to get to work with my families. I learn so much from them, just as much as I am able to teach them, but more than anything, I am proud of the work that we do within the migrant education program, where we give students the, our early learners, the opportunity to engage with learning in such a positive, joyful, and inquiry-focused way, and it's very student-centered and family-centered. So, I really appreciate this.
Thank you so much. Do you want to come up for your picture? Do you want to bring your daughter with you? That'd be great. Es importante que nuestros hijos miren también los logros que tenemos, ¿verdad? En esta, porque sí son muchas horas de pasión que tenemos en nuestro trabajo. So, just saying, it's really important for our own children to see our passion in our work, because, Serenia and many of our staff here, you know, we dedicate a lot of hours to other people's childrens, but it's important for our own children to see when we get recognized for our work as well. And the next district recognition is for Diane Fitzpatrick. Diane, can you please come up to the table? We give congratulations to Diane Fitzpatrick. She's a principal at Beaverton Academy of Science and Engineering, which we call BASE, who has earned the 2324, 2024 Outstanding Project Lead, Project Lead the Way Administrator's Award. The award honors Diane's commitment to providing students with meaningful learning experiences through PLTW program. Diane is only, is one of only 14 administrators across the U.S. to earn the award. Diane, would you like to say a few words about your work and Project Lead the Way?
Thank you so much for this ability to be recognized by the Beaverton School District. Thank you. This award is not just for me, but it's for all of us. It is because of the board's support and the superintendent's support of BASE, a school that is 100% CTE, that gets to use the Project Lead the Way curriculum, is why I'm here. So, thank you so much for allowing BASE to do what we do for kids and students.
Thank you so much, and I was recognizing that Ugana, that is your school, and you were going to read that, and I read it for her. So, can you want to come up? And we'll take a picture, and if your family's here or you have people you want up here, that'd be great. We'll now move into our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report by Dr. Valdériz.
First, thank you, and appreciate all the folks in the audience as well. First, we want to start off with our thoughts and prayers go out to all of those impacted by the tragic events in the Middle East. I want to make sure that our students feel safe in our schools. If there's issues of safety, families and students can reach out to a trusted BSD staff member, and BSD will take concrete action steps to keep students and staff emotionally safe and physically safe. Again, that's, that's paramount for our kids. I think that's something that is top of mind for me right now. And we have created a bias reporting tool that's, will help in reporting, that's going to be rolling out here. It's already been a soft launch, I think, so keep an eye on how that looks like in the future in terms of the reporting, the bias reporting tool. Again, our number one job is kid safety. Kids can't learn if they don't feel safe, so that's something that's paramount on our mind. Secondly, I want to talk about high school start times. I know that's something that's been discussed over the last few years, and we went through a pretty thorough review in terms of start times for our secondary schools. We know that high school kids starting early, it's not a great thing. You know, California moved to an 8:30 start time for all districts in California, over 1,100 school districts. Other local school districts have as well, and we probably will look to do the same. So, one of the things that is going to be a recommendation from us is to look at later start times, but we want to make sure that this is a, that the community understands this is a K-12 impact. We have roughly 59 of our enrolled kids that take transportation daily. 59% of our kids take transportation daily. That's over 24,000 of our kids. So, it's going to impact our, again, with limited transportation, it's going to impact how we do our bus runs, because our, our buses, which we have about 207 of them, is, they do multiple runs throughout the day. So, again, these buses have to, we have to, it's a big jigsaw puzzle for transportation. It truly is, making sure that we understand how we get kids to and from school. So, if we start high schools earlier, other schools have to move somewhere a little bit later. So, we try, we will try to minimize the impact, but there will be community outreach here very soon in terms of what that could look like to provide parents ample opportunity for, to make any adjustments as necessary. Also, we know there's occurring staff shortages here in Beaverton. We continue to hire and work to retain as many people as we can, and know that we've had a job fair. We'll have another job fair coming up for classified employees to fill specialty programs, especially our special programs, our special needs programs. And we know, you know, I was on a superintendent call this morning with a variety of superintendents from across the state, and know this is just not a Beaverton issue. This is a statewide issue, but also talking to superintendents from across the country, this is a national issue. We still have a job shortage issue in our country, especially in education, so something that we're going to need to continue to look at, press on, and work to see how we can find a more sustainable solution, because I know our kids are impacted, our staff are impacted in buildings, and something that we're going to continue to address. So, those are my comments. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valdériz. The next item on our agenda is the public comments, and we'll start with comments from our employee groups, which would be OSEA and BEA, so if you can please come up.
Hello. Good evening, Superintendent Valdériz, Board Chair Perez, and members of the school board. For the record, my name is Lindsay Ray, and I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as the president of the Beaverton Education Association. I'd like to start tonight by celebrating our staff. We are nine weeks into the year, and our staff are showing up every day to ever-increasing needs of students in their buildings. We are all living in unpredictable and often, an often violent world, and in the face of these looming challenges, our educators work to develop routine, provide encouragement, and maintain safe learning environments each and every day to make space for moments of joy and discovery for our students, and that is no small feat. In many classrooms and schools across the district, we are seeing increased incidence of disrupted learning. Behavior is communication, and our students are telling us that they need more support. Many class sizes and caseloads are well over what is reasonable, which means that our educators don't have the time and the resources to meet students' individual needs. For example, classroom teachers often have over 30, sometimes over 40 or more students in a class with a wide range of needs, backgrounds, interventions, interests, behaviors, et cetera. Beaverton educators are professionals, and they do magic every single day, but it is often impossible to effectively address the needs of every student. Know that we are doing our best every day, and we need to work towards solutions to meet our students where they are. In addition, I mentioned challenges in our specialized programs and special education classrooms here before, and I want to continue to raise the alarm, just like Dr. Valdériz just did, that we are still critically understaffed with para-professionals. I know there was a job fair recently to recruit more folks to those positions, and I hope that BSD will continue to seek out people to help support these classrooms. Our students receiving special education services deserve the very best, and right now, they just aren't getting it. I also want to take a moment to comment on one of the draft board operating agreements being read over tonight, specifically Section 4DB, which states that board members will not directly contact other district employees, even if there's a previous relationship established. If contacted by a staff member, the board member will acknowledge receipt and refer operational issues to the superintendent or appropriate district process, as with a member of the public. I'm very concerned about the apparent stifling of communication between the board and the staff who are carrying out the work of the district every single day. My hope is that this particular item will be reconsidered to encourage free and open communication between staff and our elected board leaders. And finally, I want to recognize that our neighbors to the east in the Portland Association of Teachers recently authorized a strike. I want to express solidarity with our union siblings, and I hope that you will encourage your fellow board members in Portland Public Schools to work to come to a fair agreement swiftly in negotiations. I hope that here in BSD, we can continue to work together for the schools that our students deserve. Thanks, y'all.
Chrissy?
Hello. Good evening. Hello, Chair Perez, Dr. Valdériz, and members of our school board. I am Kirsty Sakman. I am a roving Para II educator and the elected OSEA classified president. Thank you always to Lindsay and BEA for your thoughtful and kind comments. We as OSEA would also like to say good luck crossing fingers and showing our solidarity to our union siblings and PPS and other neighboring districts that are getting ready to start bargaining or have already began the process. Thank you, Dr. BE and Lindsay, for your comments about our specialized programs. I can promise you, as the one and only Para Rover we currently have in our district, where I get sent daily to the classrooms that are deemed the highest need, there's a lot, and something I would really like to advocate for, yes, there is a para staffing crisis, and that's a big deal, but the bigger deal besides that it's those specialized programs and those Para IIs, that's a building-wide problem. When a specialized program is short, that becomes a shortage for the entirety of the building. When we don't have enough staff trained in safety care, we're going to pull from the wellness team, the office staff, the admin, the, whoever we can to be safe adults, as well as something that I would like to remind some people that don't spend every day in a building. There are very detailed things. As a Para II in our district for eight years, I'm fully trained. I went back this summer upon taking on the Rover position and made sure that I was trained in everything I could be, every version of medication training, epinephrine, field trips, everything I could think of. But something I can't do is feeding protocols. There are a lot of classrooms where there might be two, four, six, seven kids on a feeding protocol, and only the staff that were specifically trained by the feeding team can feed them. There might be two adults in a room and six kids with a feeding protocol. Think about that alone, that 30 to an hour minute, 30 to 60-minute impact. We all know everyone is here to care about our kids, but some of the most basic needs cannot be met. Bathrooming safely, appropriately, respectfully cannot be handled, because if we're down in our programs, we're having other adults, they might like their counselor, they might like their principal. I know, I don't want my principal helping me change in the bathroom. I may not want a male or someone I don't feel comfortable with changing me, but at the end of the day, we're doing our best for our kids with the staff we have, but are students truly experiencing the best. I also think about running back to the idea of safety care. Work shouldn't hurt, but I'm always going to guarantee that my students in my care or related to my care are not hurt first, and most of the educators I know are in similar thought. When we have short programs, we also don't have the training, and I'm going to say it three more times, training, training, training. We don't have that, even of our fully trained, fully employed staff, as I should say. We need more training. We need to have the skills. I'm fully trained, and I can tell you that last week alone, I had five injury reports that I had to report because of the high need of our students. I don't think that we were doing anything wrong, but we didn't have enough adults to keep up with everything that maybe could have helped us not have to be so close and in somebody else's space when they didn't have words to share. And I'm not complaining. I love my job, because those five incident reports, I promise you, I had hours in the day that were fun, meaningful, engaging with some kids that are deemed very challenging. Yeah, we have our moments, but when we're having fun, when they're walking over asking me to play, asking to play Silly Surprise in a Box, I love it. It's great. It's what's worth it, but in those hard moments, when I have to feel like I'm the superhero for everyone in that room, every student, every adult, and not even in that room, in that building, it's hard. We need to recognize that, yes, there's a staffing crisis, and we at BSD and with OSEA, I feel thankful. We've had a lot of meaningful, truly engaging conversations about how to change and what we can do to be creative and mindful, but our staff are getting put in the corner time and time again, and if they're getting put in the corner, it's because our students already feel that, and those are a lot of, I can speak for a lot of our specialized program students, but I also recognize that that means a lot of our general education students are also having that same impact, because we're pulling their resources to cover our resources, and that avalanche keeps falling. I know that we all can say it, we all know it, but being in a building every day, experiencing the blood, sweat, and tears, and by blood, I mean truly blood, I just tell a teacher the other day, please make sure you tell the parent, all of that blood going home on that student is mine, because hands bleed a lot. I can try to cover it, I can try to put on Band-Aids, but hands just bleed. And I say that because it's just the reality. I'm not upset that I was injured in a small frustration moment, I'm just worried about the full impact of all of those things and how it's going to keep bleeding into our staff, and I don't want to lose all the amazing staff we have or the opportunities of amazing people in our community that could join us and make our lives as educators better because we're making our students' lives better. We again appreciate the many mindful conversations and ideas, but there's a time where we're nine weeks in, how many conversations can we have? How many ideas can we have before we need to put in action? We need to pull people from We need to pull people from D A O into our buildings. We need, if there's an admin meeting and there's seven staff down, maybe the admin has to join by Zoom. Online isn't my favorite, but something we have learned is the ability to be hybrid in a meeting, hybrid in a learning session. Yes, it's not the same impact, we've learned, our kids are impacted from that. But if our buildings are short, we need our admin in our buildings. That's a simple, easy one, in my opinion. I get it, admin meetings are direly important, the meetings of the big minds are important, but why can't we find the modifications that we have to make sure that our students and our staff in buildings are still supported and safe? I could talk about this forever, I'm not going to. Again, I appreciate you hearing us, and I just want to shout out, thank you, thank you, thank you, to every single educator that is tired, exhausted, sweaty, leaving any blood or Band-Aids for still showing up as calm, cool, and collected to be the best leader for our students the next day that we can. We will not survive without that dedication and love and passion, and if you're feeling tired, please know, reach out, we're here for you because our students matter, but so do we. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's now time to hear comments from our community. As a reminder, this is a time when the public can comment to the board, and the board will be actively listening, but will not be responding or answering any questions. We appreciate you being here today. The board welcomes public comments virtually or in person for up to ten people who sign up before the meeting, and when more than ten people request to speak, the priority is given to students, district residents, speakers who have not already provided public comment during the recent meeting in a variety of topics. Comments can also be submitted in writing. We have received nine requests to provide public comment today, eight in person, one online. The nine speakers for tonight will be Jade Gonzalez, Kristin Koenig, Sarah Pope, Jasmine Merritt, Ginger J., Mark Jackson, Caitlin Carey, Karen Mather McCollin, and Rowan Vedaya. Only the people I named are allowed to speak. Each person will have about two minutes, will have two minutes to share your thoughts. Your time cannot be shared or given to other person, and we have a timer on screen, and when your two minutes are up, you must stop speaking and make way for the next person. Your microphone will have to be turned off if you go over your two minutes. The school board does not hear complaints or charges against individuals, and this means that we'll end your testimony if your name, if you name a staff member, board member, or committee member by name in your testimony. Personal matters and complaints should be resolved by communicating directly with the employee, the supervisor, or through the district complaint process found on our website. We ask everyone in attendance to model respectful behavior, and remember that we have students as well as staff and community members here in person, watching and online. Our first speaker today is Jade Gonzalez. Can you please come up to the front table? Please take a seat in front of the microphone, there's one that's green right there.
I have to excuse my scratchy voice, I'm recovering from a disease brought home by my children.
No worries. And then after you will be Kristin Koenig. Let's see, please, Jade, you may begin when you're ready.
Yeah. So my name is Jade Gonzalez, and I have two daughters in elementary school here in Beaverton School District, and today I'm coming to you as a parent who knows that reading is important. So sometime earlier in the calendar year, it was maybe January or February, I don't recall exactly, a friend forwarded me an article in the Oregonian about the failing literacy rates in Oregon, and the title of the article was Too Many Students, Too Many Oregon Children Can't Read: Should Districts Be Forced to Stop Discredited Curriculum? So Beaverton School District was featured prominently in that article, and I was shocked, actually, to learn that we continue to use a widely discredited curriculum, and so I started tracking the Early Literacy Success Initiative, and was relieved to see that that finally passed in the legislature session last year. And that will mean that Beaverton will change our literacy curriculum to one that's grounded in research and phonics. So I started to pay attention to the data. Our school sent out some information earlier this year over Parent Square, and at my school, which is a Title I school, over seventy percent of students of third graders, I think it's seventy-three point two percent, fail to meet the state reading benchmark. And this problem isn't limited to our school. At sixteen additional BSD elementary schools, more students fail to reach the benchmark than meet it, and you have to go all the way up to twenty-seven from the bottom to get to that seventy percent mark, which is what in high school we consider to be passing, right? And it's probably not a surprise that all of our Title I schools fall in that category. So I see this as an urgent problem. Our current third graders this year were in kindergarten when COVID was online over Zoom, and third grade's kind of that cutoff where we, seeing my time is running out, but I know that we can do better. I know our neighboring schools are doing better, so, okay.
Thank you, Jade. Kristin, can you please come up to one of the microphones, and then Sarah Pope will be next.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kristin Koenig, and I am a mom to two students in the Beaverton School District. I'm here tonight to voice a concern, and I heard the two speakers earlier talk about the support that the staff needs and the impact that the lack of support has on the learning experience for our children, and I really want to echo that. I strongly believe that more support is needed in the school, in the class, in the halls, outside on the campus, in order to ensure that our kids have a, a good learning experience. My daughter has reported home to me lots of, you know, behavior, some of it perpetrated against her, some of it she has been guilty of, but the things that I've noticed are that the classrooms are chaotic and the student behavior is very disruptive and very disrespectful, in particular when they have substitute teachers. There's vandalism, there's assault, there's truancy that I believe could be curbed, there's drugs, and there is use of racial slurs. I don't feel that the staff has the support that they need in order to provide a safe, positive, and inclusive learning environment. I perceive that there's an allowance of misbehavior, a tolerance of infractions, and I believe that we can do something about it, and I don't want to just bring this concern to the board, I really want to be part of a solution. I quite often am thinking with the staff up at the school, you know, how can I help, you know, just even with my daughter? Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Sarah Pope, and then Jasmine Merritt after that.
Good evening, Chair Perez, Superintendent Valdés, members of the school board, and the leadership team at the district. For the record, my name is Sarah Pope, I'm a parent of two elementary school children in the district, I'm also the executive director of Stand for Children Oregon. I'm here tonight to say two things very quickly. The first is to briefly share about the Early Literacy Success Initiative, and the second is to encourage the Beaverton School District's investment in high dosage tutoring and full-time educator coaching in schools with the most struggling readers. So for background on the initiative, Stand and the governor championed with the help of educators and leaders from around the state, thank you Superintendent Valdés, a piece of legislation last session called the Early Lit Success Initiative. This allocates a hundred and forty-four million dollars to advance literacy in Oregon. The reason we focused on this is quite simple. Literacy is the key to unlocking in education, and unfortunately, far too many children in our state, especially our low-income children and children of color, have not been given the key. The largest share of those dollars, a hundred and twenty-one million, goes to school districts to do four things. Literacy coaching to support educators, high dosage tutoring for students, summer learning opportunities for students, and adopting and implementing research-to-mine literacy curriculum. The reason for those four allowable expenses is because they all have a strong research backing, and when implemented well, have been proven to improve literacy for children. I'm concluding with my ask to the school board. When you vote on Beaverton's Early Lit Success Plan later this fall, it will be really important that that plan improves our curriculum, that it provides high dosage tutoring for children in schools with the lowest third-grade ELA scores, and full-time coaches for educators in those same schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Jasmine Merritt, and then next will be Ginger J.
Hello, and thank you for your time. I am the parent of two boys receiving special education services at Beaverton School District. Last year, they were moved from Beaver Acres to a different school. We left that school in February, our family traumatized our older child and our younger child. We transitioned back to Beaver Acres. In that time, our oldest lost his success rate of eighty-five percent in transitions to twenty-five percent, and that should give enough note. The teachers and paras at Beaver Acres absolutely rose to the challenge of supporting our now very behaviorally spicy children. These paras who knew our children from the previous year remembered things that they liked as strategies that were successful in the past. They shared information with the new educators to help our children, and when I shared, my older son now called himself ugly. They supported him and shared photos of past times and brought in toys at their own expense. By the end of the year, we noted a marked improvement in both children due to their hard work. We have seen both sides, we've seen teachers and paras who respond to behaviors as inconveniences, and then we have seen those who go out of their way to address the cause of such behaviors, who do their best to support these very medically complex children. The educators and paras at Beaver Acres that we have helped, the people behind me, they care, they still ask about our older child, even though he no longer attends there, they say they are thinking of him. It is a crime that the educators who are working with some of the most medically complex children in the district are not making a living wage. It is inexcusable that there's a shortage of caring, qualified educators because the wages are not enough to live on. Without adequate support, the caring educators we have now will burn out, creating even more need. Let's show them that we care by raising their wages to a level that allows them to take care of themselves so we can continue to work in a field that is important and demands so much, wages that allow other caring individuals to pursue positions in this field, providing desperately needed support to children and fellow average educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Ginger, Ginger J., and then after that will be Mark Jackson.
So my name is Ginger J., and I teach kindergarten at Rock Creek Elementary. Like everyone else in my family, I've wanted to be a teacher for as long as I can remember. I have taught for thirty years in several different grades, many different districts, but kindergarten is my favorite. I came back to kindergarten in 2021, the year of Zoom. I finger painted on Zoom, I read stories on Zoom, I taught kids to read, write, count, and play with other kids on Zoom. It wasn't very fun, but when COVID ended, we all looked forward for schooling going back to normal, but I have to tell you that school is not back to normal. Kids come into my room with behaviors I have never seen in thirty years of teaching. The amount of trauma, anxiety, and violence I have seen this year in my classroom is enough to make me question how much longer I can do this job. I'm the teacher who always takes on the challenging kids, who loves teaching and has never thought about doing anything else until now. I've been hit multiple times, kids in my class have been hit, kicked, and bitten multiple times. Water bottles, blocks, chairs, and other items have been thrown at me, my students, and other adults. There have been multiple room clears, all while I am trying to teach twenty-one other students, many of them with issues of their own, family trauma, anxiety, poverty, and a host of yet-to-be-diagnosed learning disabilities and mental health issues that all seem to show up in kindergarten. I am being told to track these behaviors and to document everything, but very often there will be no help coming. There will be no one there to give them support, there is not enough space in special programs, there is not enough paraprofessionals. To be clear, I love my students, all of them, even the ones that are causing all of the chaos. My principal and my counselor, my student success coach have been awesome, but having them in my room all day long keeps the services away from other kids and students who also need them. We need to have smaller class sizes, we need more counselors, more social workers, more special programs, and more paraprofessionals. You need to hear us when we say that we cannot teach in this environment, and no one can learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Mark Jackson, followed by Caitlin Carey.
Good evening. My name is Mark Jackson, I am the executive director for REEP, a multicultural youth leadership organization here in the Pointe Metro area, where we serve ten school districts across five counties and twenty-seven schools, and Wix Four has been in this district, and we've had an active MOU for quite some time now that expires, I believe, in 2025. Our partnership with this district goes back to 2008. I'm both optimistic and also concerned. I'm optimistic about the legacy of partnership we've had with this district and the priority around community partnership engagement, parent-youth engagement, all of this speaks to the actual values of the organization. I'm concerned because two of our school partners recommended that our partnership be discontinued despite inactive MOU and no real clear due process to restore any disruption of services, and we had the privilege of meeting with district personnel recently to try to remedy or to address the concerns at hand, and what concerned me the most is that the district leadership supported the recommendation from the building administration to dissolve the partnership despite a partnership history going back to 2008 with no communication with parents, with students, or myself, and to sit here and listen to the intergenerality around community partnership, and to see how our partnership of legacy has been handled is quite concerning and unsettling. Mind you, we were a contractor with Northwest Regional E S D this past school year to be a contractor to advise this district with this integrated guidance process, not one return email, not one return email, not one return email on a service that community was providing this district after the entire year of a school, trying to reach out to the superintendent, no response. We're here to help, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Caitlin Carey, followed by Karen Mather McCollin.
I have a lot to say, so I will talk very fast. My name is Katie Carey, and until October twentieth, I taught in an independent skill center classroom. This was my twelfth year in public special education, and I was very good at it. My students are delightful, I genuinely couldn't love them more. They can also be a danger to themselves and others. Me and my amazing permanent staff regularly have to put ourselves between students to protect them. We're bit, scratched, hit, kicked, headbutted, and body slammed. We're covered in cuts and bruises. We sometimes have to restrain students when they are putting themselves or someone else in imminent danger. A few weeks ago, I was, I had to seek medical attention after I was kicked hard in the throat. My voice has still not recovered. Last year, a student threw feces at my face. My kids are not bad, they're learning how to regulate their minds and bodies. Not being able to communicate your wants and needs is extremely frustrating. These behaviors are just a reality of the work we do in the I S C. It is hard work, work I would have loved to continue doing if I had the support I needed to do so safely. My last five months of teaching in BSD have been chronically understaffed. When we do actually have subs in our unfilled positions, they don't know how to follow our directions. My students' needs are specific, they have behavior support plans, health plans, seizure protocols, eating protocols, toiletting support needs, exact routines, I E P goals, they elope, many of them elope. They use A A C devices to communicate. I would estimate sixty different subs have passed through my classroom this school year already, at least. Until I complained to the superintendent, I was routinely down one to three staff members a day. I believe that para two pay is the reason BSD can't staff their classrooms. People who want the job can't afford to take it. The National Poverty Guide Line for an Individual is fourteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars. The National Poverty Guideline for an Individual is fourteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Last year, first-year pay in my classroom was taking home one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars a month. That's like sixteen thousand dollars a year. That is unlivable and offensive. A hiring fair will not solve this problem. There is a shortage of people knowing to work.
Caitlin, we're gonna have to stop. But if you could email that to us, we'd be happy to read the whole, your whole document. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Karen Mather McCollum, please, followed by a virtual speaker, Rohan Vidya.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share our daughter's reading journey. My name is Karen Mather McCallum. My husband, Rob, and I are parents of a fourth-grade student at Raleigh Park Elementary, and we are concerned for our student and all the students in the Beaverton School District. Simply put, an overwhelming number of our kids cannot read at grade level. I am, however, hopeful that with the right funding, planning, and support, we can change the path that we have been on. Changing the reading curriculum, providing high-dose tutoring, and enabling our teachers with the right tools, training, and support is imperative to our future. October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. Our student was diagnosed as dyslexic at the end of third grade, and I am confident that our story is not unique. As I share our story, I do want to point out the position of privilege that our family was in to be able to support our student. Unlike forty percent of her classmates, we had the resources to navigate a diagnosis and secure the support that was needed to ensure she received appropriate reading instruction. In the last eight months, we have spent over six thousand dollars in diagnostics and tutoring support. We will continue to spend approximately six hundred dollars a month on tutoring for the foreseeable future. Prior to her diagnosis, we raised concerns about her reading progress annually with her teachers and the support team. We made the choice to invest in private tutoring and have done so since first grade. Getting a dyslexia diagnosis allowed us to finally help our daughter by providing appropriate support. This is not reasonable or sustainable solution for the twenty percent of the kids in the U.S. that may be dyslexic. Literacy is a human right and not a privilege. The teaching staff at Raleigh Park are exceptional. As a Title I school, there are resources available to support a variety of learning needs. Teachers are teaching a curriculum that is provided to them, and they are attending professional development that is mandated by the school board. Beaverton School District can change the future of our students with a new scientifically-proven reading curriculum. My ask is that when you plan for January, you include high-impact tutoring and reading coaches.
Thank you, Karen. We have one person virtually, Rohan Vidya.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to share our concern. My name is Rohan Vidya.
And if you could start the clock, that would be great. Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead.
Sure. My son goes to Sato Elementary School. This request is specifically to, for the reinstatement of bus service from Sato Elementary School to North Bethany neighborhood. There have been few requests added, written requests as well that parents have added, and mainly this is based on some of the observations that walking route to the school, to and from school to North Bethany neighborhood is not safe. Some parents have noticed near-miss accidents mainly because of cars accelerating through the intersections. And during rain or extreme weather days, car commute to a school takes longer time as experienced and observed during the last few months. So this is to request Beaverton School District to restart or reinstate the bus from Sato to North Bethany neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your comments, and we will now move to the first item for information on our agenda. An update of the district's dual-language expansion plan presented by Dr. Toshiko Maurizio, Dr. Josh Fritz, and the Teaching and Learning Department.
Yeah. Or do you, I have paper copies too. Okay.
You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Good evening, Chair Perez, Board members, and Superintendent Balderas. This evening, Dr. Toshiko Maurizio, administrator for multilingual programs, will be walking us through an overview of our dual-language expansion plan as we continue to work to develop K-12 dual-language pathways for all of our students in the district.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Perez, Superintendent Dr. Balderas, Board members, staff, and community. As promised, we're excited to be sharing the next two phases of our dual-language expansion efforts here in Beaverton. At the August board meeting, we presented our dual-language programs and the rationale for expanding programs using both external and internal research to help us make these informed decisions. The ultimate goal of our multi-year expansion plan is to provide the opportunity for any BSD student, if they choose the option to attend a dual-language school in elementary through high school with the goal of acquiring biliteracy, multiliteracy skills they will need to compete globally. The decision to expand dual-language programs is based upon a number of factors. One, research indicates that students in dual-language programs have a higher on-track graduation rate and are more likely to attend college after high school. Research also suggests that students who participate in dual-language programs experience greater confidence, self-esteem, and a sense of belonging in their school communities. Research provides strong evidence for the implementation of bilingual education as the standard service rather than exception for English learner classified students. Dual-language programming aligns to the mission, vision, strategies, and outcomes of the district's new strategic plan. Results from a survey of BSD families during the 2022-23 school year indicated that eighty-two percent of families that took the survey were interested or very interested in their children attending a dual-language program. In addition, results from the same survey indicated Spanish as their preferred dual-language program and Chinese Mandarin as the next language that families preferred. So Phase One of the expansion began this school year with William Walker adding two Spanish classrooms alongside their two English classrooms at kindergarten. Now, that program is thriving, and those dual-language trends are at capacity right now. A huge shout-out to Principal Ruth Tucker, who is doing an amazing job. Their first assembly of the school year was done in Spanish and English. So the students, our Spanish-speaking students, were very, very proud of their leader. Now, Phase Two of the expansion will happen in the 24-25 school year. So I believe this is where we can bring up the maps. We are excited to be adding the following schools to our dual-language family. Hazel Dell will start at kindergarten with two Spanish dual-language classrooms and two English classrooms. Errol Hassel will be added to Hazel Dell's region, and families interested in the program will be transported to Hazel Dell. However, priority will be given to students that reside in the Hazel Dell attendance area. Eighty-four percent of Hazel Dell families that took the survey indicated that they were interested or very interested in their children attending a dual-language program. And of the families that took the survey, ninety-one percent of the families selected Spanish as their preferred language for dual-language. Hazel Dell also has twenty-five percent Spanish-speaking students, which means the school has that critical mass of native Spanish speakers needed to run a two-way program. And then adding Errol Hassel will potentially add more native Spanish-speaking students as they currently have eighteen percent of Spanish-speaking population. So the next school that we'll be adding, might go to the next, the next map. Yes. So Jacob Wismer will be our first Chinese Mandarin dual-language program, starting at kindergarten with two dual-language classrooms and two English classrooms. Transportation will be provided to students residing in the following attendance area: Rock Creek, Springville, Sato, Finley, Terralinda, Bonnie Slope, Bethany, Oak Hills, and Cedar Mill. Students in these north-end schools may apply to attend the Jacob Wismer program. However, priority will be given to students that reside in the Jacob Wismer attendance area. And any remaining spots will be open to these schools. So for Jacob Wismer, Chinese is the third-most spoken language in the district and the third-most spoken language by the district's English learner population. And the top English learner language at Jacob Wismer is Chinese Mandarin. As part of the recent survey, eighty-six percent of Jacob Wismer parents who took the survey were interested or very interested in their children attending a dual-language program. And the top two languages selected by Jacob Wismer families were Chinese Mandarin and Spanish. Right, so maybe go back to the next? Sorry, I should have did these in order. So McKinley will be the next school that we will be adding, but they will start out in 24-25 with a pre-K program, serving students primarily in its own boundary. So dual-language pre-K is similar to a regular dual-language program. It's strategically infusing Spanish and English into the students' day, whether through key instructional time or through play or combination. As part of a recent survey, eighty-six percent of McKinley parents who took the survey were interested or very interested in their children attending a dual-language program. And of the families that took the survey, seventy-four percent of families selected Spanish as their preferred language for dual-language. McKinley has twenty percent Spanish-speaking students, which means the school has that critical mass of native Spanish speakers needed to run a two-way program. In addition, ten students currently from McKinley attend the dual-language program at Barnes, and they provide their own transportation, so there is interest in the program from that school. So in 24-25, William Walker will continue to expand its dual-language program by adding classrooms at grade one. So that's 24-25. The next phase will happen in 25-26. However, no other school, no other new school will be added that this year. We are giving time for the new programs to align with the existing programs. So this 25-26 school year will be kind of an alignment and quality control year. So Hazel Dell will continue to grade one, Jacob Wismer will continue to grade one. McKinley, this is where McKinley will add the kindergarten cohort with two classrooms in Spanish and two classrooms in English. And then William Walker will now continue to grade two. So a series of family engagement sessions will be scheduled in November and December to hopefully generate the interest in these programs. In addition, a timeline that somewhat mirrors the option school timeline will be implemented, will be implemented with clear application windows and deadlines to include lottery dates and times. So although we are only adding three schools in the next two years, it still gets us moving toward full expansion with more kids having access to the program. It's just at a less aggressive pace, but a very manageable pace. Nonetheless, we are excited, extremely excited, to offer this program to more students in the district. So that's all I have. Any questions?
We'll open up for questions. For Board members, we'll do a double-round robin. Does somebody want to get us started? Ugana?
Thank you, Toshiko, for that presentation. I'm glad that we are continuing with the work of expanding dual-language program. That's very well appreciated, and that's something that our community members are going to very, very well benefit from. So I'm seeing a short note down there that Hazel Dell program, my sight is not very good, but it's saying that Hazel Dell program will serve Errol Hassel attendance area with transportation. Am I reading that correctly? So does that mean there's no plan to expand the dual-language program into Errol Hassel? Why do they have to be served in Hazel Dell?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, because of proximity and location and capacity, we felt like Hazel Dell would be a better school to have, to hold the dual-language program. And so in creating a regional model, we figured Errol Hassel could move into Hazel Dell. So it was around capacity, proximity. We were trying to spread out the dual-language programs to create more regional hubs.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anybody else? I had a question around McKinley, starting at pre-K. Why not pre-K and kinder, for example?
Yeah. We just, we wanted to start small. We actually, we're gonna just start with two schools, and we decided to, to just add pre-K as a way to launch into kindergarten.
And I would just add that it's pretty typical to go one grade level at a time and roll those programs up rather than trying to start multiple grade levels at one time.
And I think I heard you say, I had two questions. The second one was around, was it Hazel Dell that there's ten students at Barnes that go to Hazel Dell?
Sorry, McKinley, ten students from McKinley that go to Barnes currently that attend that program.
I know that the numbers are kind of low, and they have a space at Barnes, and I know that there's gonna be a plan, you were working on a plan or something for, how do we support the neighboring schools to Barnes to support that program? Has, what, where are we in that process?
Yeah, we're still in the investigative stage, and we, we're presenting something soon to Dr. Balderas to look at.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anybody else? Oh, sorry, Sunita. Thank you.
Thank you for the information. This is very good. I'm really glad that it's starting, and it's gonna help our kids. From what I remember, the research that you had shown that kids become proficient in a language by the time they're in the sixth grade. They are strong in both the languages. Are we going to relook into this program that, because it's planning to go till the twelfth grade? Are we gonna look in, maybe in five, six years, that maybe just a foreign language as a Spanish language would be suffice for those kids rather than going through, all the way through, in a dual-language program?
Yes. So you, are you, do you mean from elementary and then going to middle school and high school, and instead of doing dual-language, just doing foreign language?
Yes, foreign language as a Spanish, and then everything else. Because they, they will be proficient by then, right? By the sixth grade, if they start from kindergarten in a dual-language program, at least that's what the research that you presented last time showed that by the time they are in sixth, fifth or sixth grade, they are proficient in both the languages.
Yeah, you should, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I mean, because there are so many other heritage languages, why not invest in other heritage languages for the kids too, once they get to high school?
Yeah, so for the dual-language pathway, I think the research that you're referring to, you do see growth in fifth and sixth grade. They are proficient in both languages. But where you see them taking off and really outperforming some of their English-speaking peers is, is if you continue the program on to high school. So if we're able to create a pathway for students, and we currently have pathways right now. So we have middle school programs in Spanish, and we also have high school programs. So students go from elementary, they go through their middle school as well as high school. So we do have K-12 pathway, and we would love to keep and stick to that K-12 pathway. But I think the other question you're asking is, can we offer other opportunities for languages, heritage languages at the high school level? And we do currently have some Spanish heritage classes, and yes, we would love to expand also the foreign language and heritage languages in different languages. We would have to fold that into our, our planning.
Thank you.
I think I, I don't see any more questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. Next on our agenda is a report from Technology Department, presented by Chief Information Officer Steve Langford.
Good evening, Chair Perez, members of the school board, Superintendent Balderas. My name is Steve Langford. I am the Chief Information Officer for the Beaverton School District, and thank you for the opportunity to share briefly about a report from the Department of IT. We are fortunate in that we have a very capable and dedicated staff in IT. Oh, too close, too far away. All right, how's that? Better?
Thank you.
All right. So we're very fortunate. We've got a dedicated staff of professionals who, in addition to their skills and abilities, they understand the connection to the teaching and learning and the business operations of our school district. The report is in your packet. I'd like to share a couple of brief items, and then I'll be happy to take any questions. The first item is an update on our ERP project. ERP is Enterprise Resource Planning. It is the HR and business application used in an organization. Next to the student information system is probably one of the most critical for an organization. We are engaged in a discovery phase to determine if we have the right application that is aligned to our needs, and also if our business processes are optimal. The team of HR, IT, and business office staff have been working very hard on this project. We have completed the current state analysis and mapping of our processes. We've started the future state, which is a redesign of our processes, and the team has recently completed the functional requirements worksheet. And that is a list of all of the features in a ERP system and their priority for us. And we will use that document whether or not we re-implement the system or whether we go out for an RFP to replace the system. We are expecting a final report, the early November, from our consultants, and once we get that report and process it, it will help us determine our next steps. And those next steps could be reimplementation or seeking a new solution. The next item I wanted to touch briefly on is our work around generative AI. ChatGPT launched a year ago. It's hard to believe it has been a full year, but it has been a year. It has had significant impact in both K-12 and higher education. And so for the past year, we have been learning along with other school systems. We've been contributing what we are learning, and we've also been learning from others on how best to integrate this. We've been contributing what we are learning and we've also been learning from others on how best to integrate this uh into our environment. Uh, it's evolving very rapidly. Uh, right now, it used to be standalone applications like Chat GPT or Bing. Generative A.I. uh for the, the ability of an A.I. to create content is now becoming a feature in applications that we use in the school district and in school districts across the country. Canva, Photoshop, both have the ability now. A.I. is a feature, not a separate place you go, and that's going to be the trend into the future. We have um taken our learnings and started to share them uh with our community. We've created a public presence on our website for parents, community members to learn more about it. We've created uh resources on our Intranet for our teaching staff to understand um how this will affect assessment, how it will affect student assignments, um and and some resources for them to understand um how the impact of A.I. into um education of students. We've done two open labs for building administrators uh so that they can learn more and ask questions and we have more of those opportunities planned into the future. As I stated, uh, A.I. is very rapidly evolving and we're gonna have to continue to learn um and then bring best best practices uh into the school system. So with that, uh, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Melissa? And then Sunita?
I have a question about the A.I. Um, and I'm just wondering if the, it's happening so quickly. And how is the staff, and my kids are bringing home a homework assignments. I'm like, can you just answer that with Chat GPT? You know, like, and no, we're not supposed to, but it, are teachers getting the support that they need to be able to rethink their curriculum and what that means in the fast pace that it's coming at us?
I'd say that is a challenge for us and it means that we have to keep on it. And we've got to be learning from the best practices that we're seeing across the country. And then we've got to find ways to make sure we're sharing that with teachers. Um, I wish that was a a simple, yes, everyone's doing well. Uh, the reality, this is A.I. is generating content at such high level now. It is, it is going to take us some time and we're gonna have to learn um how to integrate it at the same time that it's already here and there's no moving back from it.
Right. And as a follow-up, in that professional development, I'm wondering, is there a place for student voice in the rapidly changing framework of bringing that student voice into what they want to see coming out of the curriculum and what they, what would be helpful for them? I don't know if that's even possible.
I I think so. I think we're gonna have to put some thought into that. Um, we what we need to do, and it's not just for students. I think what what we all need to understand is how can we use this tool as a resource, not to replace our critical thinking, not to replace our learning, but how do we use it? Um, much like we had to figure that out with calculators uh when I was, well, uh, a long time ago. But the the great thing is, we do have a great partnership with teaching and learning. Uh, this is, this is not something that is confined to a department. It really is organizational learning that we're gonna have to undertake, and so we're doing this together.
I appreciate that, uh, like that opportunity, right? There's an opportunity there too, so thank you.
I remember the calculator world too. And before computers, when you had to call people on the phone, regular phones. Um, Sunita?
So my question is also about A.I. because it's so evolving. I'm wondering when we, when we are in the process of creating guidelines and directions that we are giving to our kids in the school. Um, when, are are the universities also, are we doing that in conjunction with what are the guidelines the universities are giving? Like, for instance, when they do a, an essay to get into a college, some universities say that you cannot, or even when you are in the university, they say that you cannot use Chat GPT or A.I. tools. But A.I. is not going anywhere. We know that. It's only going to get more and more in our system because it's so useful too. But so there are two parts. One is their learning, because they still need to learn how to write. They cannot just use A.I., so that's one portion. And the other portion is when we create the guidelines, let's, are we doing it or let's do it, you know, in conjunction with the universities around us? Because eventually, if the kids are planning to go to a university, they need to have a clear guideline or a direction from the school that this is what you need to do.
Absolutely, and and the impact on A.I. is is exactly the same for higher educational institutions. Um, some of the best learning right now coming from the, out of, out of the country is coming from University of Kansas. And they've been doing a lot of work. They've been sharing it very publicly. Um, we have been taking a lot of that work because it is very applicable to our school system as well.
Thank you.
Ugana and then um Dr. Tammy.
Thank you, Steve. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Um, so my question is around the device, the school provided devices. And I read somewhere in the report that um elementary school students don't use the devices at home. But for um secondary school students, they do use them. Um, what do they, do they use them for their schoolwork, for their assignments at home? If so, um, for our low-income students who don't have access to internet, is there any way that the school is supporting them with um internet access at home?
That's a great question. And yes, our secondary students uh received Chromebooks starting in twenty fifteen. Uh, thanks to the twenty fourteen bond, we were able to begin that digital transformation and and provide devices for students. Um, they have taken them home since that time. And um, they, when we look uh at total student use uh through the filter, we can see that the top twenty-five sites that students go to, and we're not looking at individual students, but we are looking at at how they are get, being used. They're educational sites. They're using Canvas, um, which is our learning management system. Uh, they are using Rees, Google, a lot of Google applications, and they're using resources connected to learning. So that, I think, is a, shows that the devices are very important for extending learning at home. And uh, so that's encouraging. Now, do they do other things on them as well? Yes, they do, but but primarily, this is a device used for learning um and extending the school day. For our students who don't have connectivity, we do have a program where they can receive a hotspot. And so um, we have processes in place and schools know those processes. Uh, they contact I.T. We make sure that students who do not have connectivity have connectivity at home.
Tammy?
Uh, just clarification. Um, so A.I. and Chat GPT are not addressed in the Student Code of Conduct. This is done at the classroom level currently?
Well, it's a good question. You know, the 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 big, what we're wrestling with right now is around policy. Um, and that's a big discussion. Do you create separate policies for A.I.? Or are 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 existing policies, um, can they be in play? So for example, we have a academic integrity policy and we've got that in our Student Code of Contact, Conduct. If I, if uh, if I was a high school student and I just decided I was gonna have Chat GPT write all of my essays, well, it's not really an A.I. uh policy. That's an academic integrity. So I think what this is triggering is that we're gonna need to look through our Code of Conduct and our policies and procedures and say, you know, is the use of artificial intelligence something that needs to be separate or can it be integrated to existing policies? And that's, that's work that we we're gonna need to undertake.
Justice?
Is there, thank you, uh, Steve, and this hopefully will be not a totally oddball question, but is there any impact um in terms of how, what A.I. demands of our equipment that would impact like costs, cost of replace, lifetime usage, you know, something like if kids were trying to mi- mine Bitcoin on their Chromebooks, right? It would use tons of energy. Is there any relationship with A.I. or potential impact that we should be considered, considering as a district around how this could pack, what it costs us to actually do our I.T.?
That is a good question, and and there have been school districts where students have tried to to mine Bitcoin. That's a highly intensive process, not really good for the machine. Um, A.I.'s a bit different because all of the processing is done on servers um that are not on the machine. So there's, there's no impact to the student device. Indeed, you can use it on your phone uh very effectively.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, our next um item is about property acquired by Hillsborough School District, presented by Deputy Superintendent Dr. Carl Mead and Chief Facilities Officer Casey Wallage. Is Casey here? No, just.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Uh, you've got in your board packet this evening um information regarding the Hillsborough property that is currently located inside the Beaverton School District. I want to take your um, take you to the summary, and that's the most pivotal piece of information here on um the write-up. So the school, uh, Beaverton, sorry, not Beaverton, Hillsborough School District acquired the property in the fall of twenty twenty-two, known as the Oberg Property, which is located within the service boundary of the Beaverton School District. The purpose of Hillsborough's acquisition is to own that land that could ultimately be used as a new high school and/or elementary school, as it's potentially to be able to cohabitate both on the same site. O.R.S. three-three-two-point-one-five-eight requires H.S.D. or Hillsborough to obtain written approval from B.S.D. Board to acquire and operate a school within our property. I want to give you a little bit of timeline though, and you have a map in your packet. If you can pull that up, if you've got it available to you. The property that is this long blue one here, that is within the Hillsborough School District. That property was actually acquired back in two thousand fourteen. It's approximately forty acres. Um, and so you can see, I I have referred to it as a bowling alley. It's not a reference that Hillsborough has used, but it's, it's one that I have used just to describe it when we're talking about properties there. So in two thousand twenty-two, um, let me back up just for a moment. In two thousand seventeen, the Hillsborough School District passed a capital bond program. Similar to ourselves, it allows them to be able to purchase properties, to make improvements and facilities and the sort. In approximately twenty twenty-one, um, they are, around twenty twenty-one, they were looking at adding property to this long or rectangular property here. Initially, they were looking to the east, that which would have been out in the Hillsborough area. In the late fall of two thousand twenty-two, the owners, known as the Oberg Property, this triangle here, came to or went to the Beav- I'm sorry, to the Hillsborough School District and informed them that they were willing and available to sell that property. Hillsborough took advantage of that opportunity. It was in late fall and the owners of that property, the Oberg, Oberg Property, wanted to sell it by the end of twenty twenty-two for tax purposes. So it was a very short window. And so the School Board of Hillsborough chose to move quickly on that and did acquire this property here. So you can see the adjacency in which it has to the longer property. So overall, this is just simply to provide you information and background to this property that is within the Beaverton School District. We're not asking for you to take any action today um or anything in the near future on this. This is not property that Hillsborough is looking to build on. I would say we're easily twenty, thirty, potentially even forty years out from them uh being able to move forward with buildings on this. They cannot construct a building and have students inhabit it without approval by the Beaverton School District because that boundary would have to change and include this triangle into the Hillsborough School District. At any point in time in which a student would be to attend that school, it has to be approved by the Beaverton School Board. Now, some of you want to be here in twenty, thirty or forty years. Potentially, that opportunity is there. So this is just provided to you as information um and background as it came to us um in two thousand twenty-two when the property was acquired by Hillsborough School District. So happy to take any questions that you may have.
Um, Tammy?
I think when I was first reading this, I thought, and again, we're not being asked yet. Um, I guess I thought the question would be, would we allow Hillsborough to build a school within our boundaries? But what I think I just heard you say is that we would shift the boundaries. Okay.
That's correct. That's correct.
And is there precedent for this? It's, I mean, the, just even looking at the boundary right now, I was like, whatever, another angle. It doesn't seem like a big deal to me, but um, has this, I, obviously, it has to have happened before because there's a statute surrounding it. But is that something that B.S.D. has encountered before?
Yes, we have previously engaged with Hillsborough School District in the um, with changing of boundaries, um, most recently over in the Hazel Dell attendance area. So on that east, obviously, the east side, but that portion of the school district. And that was ten-plus years ago. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Valderras.
That's it, that's the whole mountainside area?
Uh, it was the Hazel Dell attendance area in that area. Um, I think that was probably easily ten-plus years ago at this point. Yes.
Um, other questions?
So recommendation here would be, is that once we get to this point, I think, is something that uh maybe if the Board wants to discuss in terms of what are variables where a future board, because again, we don't want to commit a future, I don't want to commit a future administration or a future board to decisions that we don't know are gonna, what the impact is twenty, thirty years from now. But I think the, the number one probably variable would be is, once this property gets into the urban growth boundary, maybe that triggers a discussion between the two districts, which makes sense to me because again, it's not in the urban growth boundary. But once it gets in there, maybe that's the trigger for a board to board discussion and staff to staff discussion. Yeah, this could be years from now.
I appreciate that, but the expansion of the urban growth boundary could be sooner than when the district might need to build out on it. And so if the Hillsborough School District deems it as excessive property, like we have in the north, we just recently sold property that we deemed excessive property. And Hillsborough does the same thing and they sell it to a developer, to those students, because it's still within the Beaverton boundary, those students would still be Beaverton School District students.
That is correct. That is correct. We have not, it, by no action of the Board, this remains it within the Beaverton School District. And let's say in twenty years' time, they find that that property is surplus, they sell it to a developer, those students become Beaverton stu-, those students are Beaverton students.
Okay.
Yeah. And in reference, and Dr. Valderras, thank you for saying that, urban growth boundary on this map is outlined in green. So that's, you can see where it's actually at as it pertains to current boundaries.
Um, other thoughts? I think for me, it was, sorry, the idea that, you know, our student population is going down and making a decision for them to buy the property without, with statute being that we should have talked about it. I know it was a quick decision, I think you said, um, and it was stated before, it was a quick decision that they needed to make, but it still impacts the Beaverton School District. And um, I don't feel comfortable making, I personally don't feel comfortable making a decision, like we were saying, for a future board. Um, I think the recommendation of, I think what I heard was the recommendation that if, at some point, the urban boundary um changes or that, so could they just start building, let's say?
So what has to happen is if, if in fact, if and when the urban growth boundary moves forward. The other part of that, that is not, that's one factor in this. They also have to determine if, in fact, development is moving in that direction. We have no idea where the economy is going to be in five years, two years from now, let alone twenty years from now. So it may be that that area of Hillsborough is not being built out. That would primarily be the reason why the urban growth boundary gets moved, is because growth is necessary, growth is needed. And we have filled all existing capacity within the urban growth boundary at the present time. That's typically why that boundary gets changed ultimately. So again, it's, there's some triggers that are going to happen. That doesn't happen overnight. That is a two-to-three-year process and a lot of meetings happen. And so that is something that we would be made aware of as a school district, that their consideration of the urban growth boundary is being considered for expansion. And it doesn't mean that it's only, urban growth boundaries can expand in various areas. It could be over in the Gresham area. It could be over in, you know, East Portland area. It doesn't necessarily mean, simply because in conversations are happening, that it's specific to this area. So it's really dependent upon where the pushpoints are.
So for the record, we aren't, this current board is not approving or um this ask for us to fill out some document to say that it's okay for them to build. And what we're saying is that when the urban boundary changes, um, that that future board would then um be notified in the sense of that they will then be able to make a decision at that time.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I guess my last comment is, we are, we're good partners with our neighbors to the west. And so I understand that it was a rapid experience. We've all been pushed into those need for rapid decisions. So I appreciate the learning of, okay, so if this happens again, and it could be ten years from now that Beaverton- and it could be 10 years from now that Beaverton's looking over to Hillsborough saying, hey, that might be great for us. So, I just, I want to recognize the relationship, the good relationship we have. And even though it was fast, it's, we're going to figure it out. But I, there are, there are good neighbors that we want to collaborate with as much as possible.
Absolutely, absolutely. And please, I want to be very clear, Hillsborough broke no laws or anything. They didn't break the ORS. ORS guides about when students are to occupy a space within another district. And that is not even a factor. We ourselves in Beaverton, if we chose to acquire property in Hillsborough, could choose to do so as a school district. But for us to actually inhabit it with students, it has to go through the same authorization of that school board.
I still have PTSD from mountainside when I worked in Hillsborough, so.
And I, and I guess for me, it was a PTSD of having another, the charter school also taking property and moving forward. So, I think it's having these two pieces of people taking property from Beaverton so close together that, to me, kind of sparks something. So, thank you. Oh, sorry, Sunita.
So, basically, just to clarify what you're saying, it's just for right now, it's just an investment for them, investment property. And we are saying, we are not doing, eventually, without, without ever consent or the consent of the future board, it's just an investment property. They can't do anything on it unless, other than sell it to someone.
That's correct. And so, similar to Beaverton schools, I would go back 20, 30 years ago, when we were in the, we were trying to land bank property as we needed to build, we knew we'd need to build Tumwater. We've had, you know, Sato, Jacob Wismer, Body Slope. All of those have been properties that we've owned at different times. We currently own two properties in the north and the south end of the district for elementary sites. We have no plans of building on those now. So, it's very common for school districts to create, or to acquire properties, minimum of 10 acres typically for an elementary school, for a land bank. 20 acres minimum for a middle school and 40 acres for a high school. Very common practice across the country for that. Beaverton has built out. Hillsborough, on the other hand, is completely surrounded by significant farming property. But again, much of it outside of the urban growth boundary, so.
Yeah, the only difference between us buying a property, we bought it within our district. They have bought it in our district.
That's correct. That is correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Good clarification. Just for a reference, the bowling alley plus the triangle, what's the size? How many acres is the two together?
The 40 acres, the blue property, the bowling alley, is within the Hillsborough School District. Okay, that is 40 acres. I believe between the two properties, it's close to 70.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. The intent there, if they were to build on it, would be at the top end of the bowling alley, would be an elementary school. The rest would be occupied for high school properties, fields and the sort.
We have about 45 minutes left in the meeting. Do people need a stand-up break, or we just keep going? Okay, so we'll take maybe a five-minute recess and then come back.
Okay, calling the board meeting back in session at eight thirty-nine. Our next item is the annual compliance report of the Oregon Division 22 standards for public education presented by Dr. Josh Fritz, Veronica Galvan, and Kristi House.
Good evening again, Chair Perez, board members, and Superintendent Valdériz. Districts are required to annually evaluate compliance with the Oregon Standards for Public Elementary and Secondary Schools each year by November first. This evening, members of the Teaching and Learning Team, Veronica Galvan, Administrator for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Kristi House, Accountability, Data, and Assessment Specialist, along with myself, will present information about the areas that Division 22 standards cover, as well as the district's compliance with Division 22 standards for the 2022-2023 school year. So it's really important, not talking about now, we're always looking at your past, so we'll be talking this evening about last year. Can we get our slides pulled up? Oh, well, that is interesting. That's okay, we can talk without them. They should have been in the board packet, so we'll, we can wing it. No worries.
Okay, good evening. Division 22 standards are a set of rules used in elementary and secondary schools in Oregon that state legislature, that the state legislature or state board determine must be met in order to be a standard school district. These rules or standards are monitored, and compliance is tied to state school funding. In addition, compliance with Division 22 ensures that every student in Oregon public schools is provided with a level of services that meets the standards set by the state. There are over fifty individual rules in Division 22. They are under one of four categories: teaching and learning, health and safety, district performance and accountability, and human resources and staffing.
In the fall, districts review each rule for the previous school year. Tonight, we will be providing the results from our review of the 22-23 school year. In the review, districts must certify that the district is in compliance or propose a corrective action. This compliance report is then reviewed with the school board, submitted to the Oregon Department of Education, and posted on the district website for the community to view. ODE then works with districts that have reported being out of compliance.
During the 2022-2023 school year, the district was in compliance with fifty-five out of fifty-eight Division 22 requirements. Now, it's not unusual that schools would be outing compliance in multiple areas. It's always kind of a, the intent is a continuous improvement cycle. For us, again, we were in compliance with all of those, with the exception of two areas. One area was physical education minutes. Previously, there was a requirement that at the middle school level, it was very specific, at the middle school level, there needed to be two hundred minutes of PE a week for students, and we, with our current schedule, were not in compliance with that last year. That rule changed, it's now a hundred and fifty minutes per week at the middle school level, so we are currently in compliance, but again, we're always looking after the facts. So for our report this year, we're out of compliance for those PE minutes at middle school, but that has resolved itself. Additionally, the other area was instructional materials adoption and purchase. The district has been working on an implementation of a corrective action plan since at least 2021, possibly even before that, and really what that is, is that over time, the district got out of cycle with the adoption of instructional materials. So even though we've been adopting materials, we haven't been exactly on the same cycle as the Oregon Department of Education. Previous boards, to all of you, approved that corrective action plan back in 2021 that would, over time, get us back in compliance with the cycle that the state has set. I'm happy to say we've made great improvements on that plan. For instance, the world language adoption that happened last year, that was one of the steps that moves us towards compliance with that plan, and in fact, at next month's board meeting, we'll be bringing back to you an updated action plan that reflects all of the work that has happened since 2021, showing that we're getting closer to that. Regardless, because we have a current action plan in place with the Oregon Department of Education, that necessitates that on our report, we're still considered out of compliance in that area. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
I just had a question about the PE and the minutes. Can you talk about the use of PE in health? Does health count as physical education time, and what does that look like in middle school and high school for those a hundred and fifty minutes per week?
Yeah, so health is its separate standard, so this is specific to the number of minutes that students are actually engaged in a physical education course. Previously, it was two hundred minutes per week at the middle school level, and now it has changed to be a hundred and fifty minutes a week. So we're completely in compliance with that now, it's just previously, we were not in compliance with the number of minutes.
So is that just for the students when they're in PE, or is that for a student gets to have PE every single day, or a hundred and fifty minutes per week, because the high schools have that eight, or even odd schedule? Is that for the whole year, or is that just for when they're enrolled in PE?
It's when they're enrolled in PE, and the law is actually specific to middle school. Don't ask me why. So it really is about number of minutes at middle school. High school's different. High school, you have to earn one credit to graduate, and so you can actually do that over two different semesters, so it's a different regulation for high school PE.
So our middle school students get a hundred and fifty minutes of PE for the, per week for the whole year?
That's, that's correct, yes.
When do they do their health?
That's a question I'm not prepared to answer here, but we could certainly get you information about how that health unit is, is factored into that.
Okay. Other questions?
On my part, I just, I'm excited to see the action plan at the next board meeting that you mentioned. I'm curious to see, I know we had stopped the language arts adoption because we're waiting for the state to adopt, and so it'd be great to know, like, which ones we're still gonna, in that plan, when you present next time, if you could add which curriculum adoptions are yet to come, and when we think they're going to be doing those, that'd be great.
Right, so that corrective action plan that will be in next month's board meeting, it's actually an item that you'll all vote on, and, and so it's in the consent agenda. It actually lists out each, it's just an update of the original 2021 action plan, but we are moving forward with the K five language arts adoption this year, so again, that's part of that corrective action.
So just to clarify what you said, the, the action plan that's going to be in the next board meeting is in the consent agenda right now, is what you're saying?
That's correct, yep, yeah. And just so you know, we have been working with the Oregon Department of Education. Again, what it is, is updating that action plan that was initially put in place back in 2021. So ODE has weighed in, and we're ready to move forward with that, but that's another pieces to bring it here to the board.
Okay, thank you.
It might be helpful to have some extra info maybe in the memo, so that we can, since it's, if it's in the consent agenda. Thanks. Thank you so much. Now we go to the monthly financial report from Associate Superintendent Mike Schofield.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, School Board. Dr. Valdériz, appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about finances of the district tonight. You have in your packet the usual number of reports that we share each month. I won't take as much time as I took last month to share kind of where we're at. As usual, we'll go over the general fund activity and forecast quickly. Revenues in that area didn't change much, our fund balance went up just a little bit, about a hundred thousand dollars, I believe. And on the expenditure side, you've heard it all night, it's been a theme, our understaffing and our inability to hire staffing, you'll see that we brought down our salaries and benefit numbers a skosh because of that. That's what we're seeing at this time. If those numbers are to change or were to change, we'll make changes accordingly as we move through the school year. So as we address those things and find ways to get more folks in our buildings, we'll update the forecast accordingly. Just on the overall district front, and what's going on, and what we're watching in the business office, at the end of September, the PERS Board met, and they got their 2022 valuation, which suggests rates will rise again in the 2025-2027 biennium. This is interim advisory, so it's not the one they'll use to actually determine rates, that will happen next year for the 25-27 biennium, but right now, it suggests rates would go up somewhere in the one to three percent range for employers in the 25-27 biennium. So we'll keep an eye on that. It varies depending on whether or not you issued pension bonds, we did, so each of those districts that did issue pension bonds will get individual rates, so we'll know those, and we'll know those well ahead, we'll know those about this time next year to help us in our budget for the 25-27 biennium. What's driving rate increases are two things, primarily lower-than-expected investment returns in 2022, actually a negative return of just under two percent for the 2022 year, where the expected assumed rate is six point nine percent, so a little underwater there. And in addition to that, what Millman is seeing in terms of salary increases in the state, and what's going on, what's gone on with inflationary pressure, they're raising their wage forecast assumptions, so that, that will have an impact on rates as well. So we'll keep an eye on that, but we're still a year out. Again, those were just advisory rates. On November fifteenth, this is the next state economic forecast, so we'll be paying attention to that, see how the state's doing, and check in from that perspective. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions on this one? Thank you for your time. Our next piece is our annual review of our policy investment of funds, which is also you.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity, yeah, it was a short trip.
That was a quick switch.
Appreciate it. So Policy DFA is our investment policy for the school district, and within that policy, what we say we'll do is take a look at it every year. It's also a best practice, just to do a review of our investment policy for the district. I will remind you that under, I think it's Section Two of the policy, that's, that's primarily where I live as your CFO and responsible for finances of the district, and our priorities are in priority order, maintaining our capital, in other words, not losing money on an investment, keeping that, that capital liquid, that is, we can pull the money out and use it as we need it, and then finally, our third priority is yield and return. So we're not out chasing yield, trying to do anything exotic with our investments, and in fact, if you look in the investment report, you'll see almost, almost all of our investments are in a lot of government-backed securities, that's where we invest most of our funds, that and the local government investment pool. We do have a little bit of corporate credit as allowed, but you, if you want to dig into that, you'll see, I think we've got a little bit of Apple corporate credit, a little bit of Toyota corporate credit that we're holding on the books, but again, nothing spicy or exotic here, this is all pretty vanilla, just the way we like it in terms of school district investments. So I'll take any questions on this, again, no action tonight, just what the policy says is you'll take a look at it and review it.
Any questions, comments on this one? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You do have the next item too, right? No, just kidding. Are you prepared for that one? Okay. Our last item for information before we moved on to items for action and future action is to touch base on our current approved schedule for board meetings. So under the current board meeting schedule that we approved on June twentieth and reapproved with some date revisions on July twenty-fifth, the board meets one or two times each month with business meetings starting at seven, and the work-study session at five-thirty, and on those days, in the additional days, wait, additional days and alternative months, but basically, what we're trying to do is to figure out if that's working for us. I know that some board members have indicated that it's been challenging to get here on time by five-thirty PM if they leave work around five, so just wanted to check in with us to see if it's, if we continue this year with that schedule, we have some options that I can talk through if we want to move that back, and I guess one thing I would say is that because we are a new board, we are trying to fit those work sessions in so that we can actually just have conversation on things, but we also, we want to be mindful of people's lives and schedules, so any comments on that from people? Melissa?
I really appreciate the opportunity to do learning before decision-making, and I think that that pattern of having opportunities to have more casual conversations, to help bring in staff, and help us make sure that we're well-informed, and I think maybe that's because we're new, that we're spending a little bit more time making those connections, but I've appreciated the time, and I recognize that tension, but if we make a change, I would really like to keep those learning opportunities as much as possible, so we can stay as well-informed as possible.
Sunita, and then Tammy?
Yeah, I, I also appreciate the work sessions, because we are learning a lot, even though we have, we are two-year-old board members, I truly appreciate that, but at the same time, I would say six o'clock is better for me personally, because it's always a, you know, it's hard to get here on time and with the workday and everything, so I would appreciate if we can, but also keep our work sessions, I don't want to let that go away. Thank you.
Tammy?
Yeah, another person that struggles a little bit, but I agree with Melissa, I adore the work sessions, I wouldn't want to sacrifice those. I think I would lean towards continuing the schedule as-is for the rest of our school board calendar year, just to see how, like, how it works, you know, for me personally, today, for some reason, I was assigned a vacation day, which isn't terrible, but it's, it's hard in my clinical responsibilities to guarantee that I can walk out of the building at five, so I'm currently kind of relying on, you know, the graciousness of my partners to take over some work, and I think that if I spend a year trying to make this work, I'll have a better sense of it, so I, you know, I share the concern that, Sunita, it's hard to get here by five-thirty, but I'm willing to continue if the rest of the group is, just to try and see how it works for the rest of the year, and then make some changes if needed for next year. Thanks.
Justice, do you have any comments on?
I think my only comment would be, I, I do like having the work session separate extra time, and I'm flexible on, you know, six o'clock would be fine, if that works better for everyone, like, in overall, yeah, five-thirty, six o'clock, six o'clock would be a little easier in life some days, but I imagine many times, I'd be happy to start a little earlier too, but I'm, I'm flexible, comfortable with a change if it suits the board.
Okana?
Six o'clock sounds good, but then again, if that is gonna entail making the meeting longer and keeping us here till ten o'clock, then it's not gonna work for me, so, except if we, I still want us to continue to have our work sessions, like, today, we finished our work sessions early, so if we start at six o'clock and not necessarily do a two-hour training, today was supposed to be five-thirty to seven o'clock, we were done at six, six forty-five-ish, so if it's the same time, if we're gonna have that at six, but let it not go into our meeting time, our broad meeting time, that would require us to stay here till ten o'clock, it will not work for me, because I have to get home to my son, so.
One thing we need to leave is a little cushion between both meetings, so that we can switch systems to be able to broadcast, so we probably need to leave at least five minutes, and I don't know if people want to stretch, so what I'm hearing people say that is, is that a little bit later start time might be good, and I also heard continuing this year, I don't, would it be helpful, would it be helpful to start like five-forty-five, and then is that maybe just fifteen more minutes, we can try that for, and then still leave that a little leeway, so we'll make our work sessions just a little bit shorter, and maybe a five-forty-five start time and still try to get here, out of here, done with the, with the meeting, would that work for people? For five-forty-five start time for work sessions?
That would be much better for me, just that fifteen minutes, I think, would make it all work.
Okay. Anybody opposed to that?
So we'll try to leave work at the same time, and try to make it so you can get a little food in you before we start. Okay, let's try that for now, and then we can always come back and talk about it if that's still not working for people.
Okay, thank you for engaging. So hearing all agreeing, continue with the schedule, or not continue with the schedule, but starting at five, five-forty-five, we'll move on to our next item, which is our consent agenda. Susan Greenberg isn't here, but do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion to, do I, do I have a second to approve?
I second it.
Thank you. All, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. With unanimous vote, we will, it passes unanimously, so thank you. We will now move on to other items for action. Only one item in the meeting is approval, is the approval of the board, sorry, board policy revisions we discussed in our last meeting. The district general counsel, Camelia, and chief of staff, Carrie, are available for any questions before we vote on approval. Do we have any questions or comments for this part? Okay, so we had that discussion last time, but do I have a motion to approve the revision of the board policies as they are outlined in our board packet?
I wasn't here.
Go ahead, Justice, if you would like to.
Well, I would say I move to approve the
Revisions of the board policies.
Board policy revisions.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Again, sorry, does anyone have any questions, and we said no so far. So we'll take a vote, all in favor of approving the proposed board policy revisions, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously, so thank you. We will now move to our items for future action. So we'll start with the superintendent evaluation process. The board policy and contractual agreement has us formally evaluate Dr. Valdériz, our superintendent, on their job performance annually, and the evaluation provides an opportunity for the board to assess the progress on district priorities. So earlier today, we had a work session where we discussed Dr. Valdériz's priorities areas for his 2023-2024 school year, which include the following sections aligned in the foundational building blocks of the BSC strategic plan, which are engaging in effective teaching and learning systems, authentic engagement with students, families, and community, facilities and programs for world-class learning, effective systems and structures for students' success and equity and excellence for all, and the superintendent's evaluation process will be considered for approval at the next business meeting on November twenty-eighth, 2023. We'll now open up, I don't know if, is there anything you want to share, Dr. Valdériz?
No, but can I ask your board questions? I know we, we had a study session, discussion about this, are ready to brief the board.
Okay, thank you. We will open up for any quick board discussion, is there anything anyone would like to add at this time? Looks like we got our questions answered during the work session, so our next item is the board operating agreement. So the board annually reviews and affirms or revises the board operating agreements that are outlined how, that outline how the board members will work with each other and the superintendent. We have Mike's, I was gonna say Mike Schofield here. Do you want to come up?
Welcome.
That was a quick transition. Yeah, come on in, come by. Do you want to share a little bit about the process that we followed, and, okay, thank you, welcome.
Absolutely, thank you for the opportunity just to give an update. Last time we were together, we had the opportunity to share a draft of the working agreements with you, and during that process, we took some time to just get your feedback on those, and following the, the receiving of the feedback, we made some changes to it, and that's what we have in front of you tonight, it's just the new draft of these working agreements with your, with your recommendations taken into account. Just to highlight a few of the areas that were there, that were brought up that evening, we, there was concerns about the roles and responsibility chart being there, and so that's been moved to an addendum, still available for your reference, but not in the working agreement specifically. Under Section Two, we wanted to clarify that the board does operate under Robert's Rules of Order, and put clarification in there, that is used as a tool for communication, it's not in any way meant to be a diminisher of input in, in using that process. Under two J, there were sharing, just the sharing of concerns, when board members have a concern that those issues will go to the, what issues will go to the superintendent, and which issues will go to the board chair. Under Section Three, there were some redundancies that were pointed out that, that had been removed. Carrie and I had the opportunity to work on, on these, and we combined some of the items, and we also just removed some of the repetition that was there. Under Section Four, regarding communication with the board, we simplified that section, added some further clarification regarding responding to emails, specifically from community members that are within each board member's zone, also added information in there about acknowledging receipts, so that board members could acknowledge receipt of an email from a community member, as well as copy the superintendent, and there's clarification on when the board chair responds, and then CCing the other board members on that response. Under four D, board requests for information from the sat, from the staff, there was a conversation about the number of minutes, and we ended up softening that language, so you'll see that under four D, and then under four E, clarification regarding communication for school visits, there was a lot of conversation about that, and so tried to have some more specific language in there that shed some light on that. Any questions or any concerns that still remain? Our next steps would be that we would bring these forward for action at the November twenty-eighth board meeting. Carrie, anything you wanted to add?
Any comments from the board? I, I have one amendment, as I thought about CE, which is that one about if communication is sent to the board, to all board members, the chair and designated will respond on behalf of the board, copying the superintendent and blind copying the board. The more I thought about that one, I don't know if that's a good idea, and wondering if it could cause like a serial meeting, or just for the sharing of information in that way, so I would like to amend that one to say that if a board member would, is, is, you know, I, I respond, I try to respond between, within forty-eight hours, if not by the weekend, but I usually try to respond
But I usually try to respond regularly for people. But if board members are curious, or, or, you know, are like, hey, I'm really wondering about that one, that response or what you responded, then I think it would be great if they reached out to me and I can have a conversation with them. And or if multiple board members are interested, we can bring it up in, like, I don't know, figure out how to get people information, but making sure that we're not, I'm not causing some kind of serial meeting in, in trying to share information. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I don't know if it would constitute a serial meeting because it really is just the sharing of information that community members have as well. But I understand you wanting to be really careful with all of that.
So that's one, one piece that I wanted to mention. I see Sunita's hand is up as well.
I was gonna say the same thing. First of all, we need to answer, does it cause a serial meeting? If it doesn't, then I think it would be nice for the other board members, if, because they are being asked that question too. Because the question is going to all the board members. So to be, to know what's, what the answer is would be helpful to the other board members. That's my personal thought.
I'm wondering if, Camelia, if there's any concern, if we can ask with that kind of sharing? Yeah, it's communication with the public and it's E?
Four CE.
I can give you a minute if there, we can come back to it in a second.
And we are talking here about the board chair responding to a single email and not other board members then engaging in further conversation? Yes.
Yeah, I guess.
I, I think there is a clarification. I don't think the other board members will be adding to that. Just being, just they know that what, how the chair responded to that. I don't think we are going to add on to that conversation. That, that's my understanding, at least. That's what I was thinking.
My understanding as well, that the board chair is responding to that inquiry and copying the entire broad, but we don't necessarily have to respond to that email chain. So I don't think it's a serial meeting, in my opinion.
So, so I would agree. I think that the response itself is not going to create a serial meeting. I think board members will just have to keep that in mind when they see a response that they're copied on, not to start responding within that chain because that's what's going to potentially create the meeting at that point. But, but the board chair responding on behalf of the board itself and copying folks, that's not going to create an issue.
Would it be helpful to put that reminder in the bullet point for other, for other board members not to respond?
And I think about like responses to, like, I usually, it's a process because some of the questions are more complex. I don't have answers for people. Like, I, I'm staying in my lane and I don't, I, I don't know all the details that happen. So oftentimes I will respond, yeah, so.
So I, I, I hear Karen's concern. I think that's a very valid concern. This may add a little bit to your work. I don't know, Karen, how you feel about it. Maybe you could just, after you have sent it to that person, you send it to the rest of the board. That this was my conversation. I don't know if that would work.
One other piece is that we get a ton of emails sometimes and depending on the time of the year and topics, so it might be a lot.
I think a question is, what's the answer going to be from the board? They're going to defer typically to staff. So the answer is just receipt of the email and directing it to staff, really. Because that's typically what a board member would do. Is just acknowledge the receipt. I think they acknowledge of the receipt that they're being heard and then processing it to, to my office. And then how do I circle back to the board to make sure that they're being responded to? I think that's another question. Right? So, because again, a board member isn't expected to answer a question because you don't know the answer. You're going to get the answer from me. So it's, goes back to the working agreements, sending any questions to me. And then how, because you're just acknowledging the receipt, then me sending to the robot staff, yeah. It's a response, right? It's a, it's a feedback loop.
So I think there's two pieces there. Like, there's one is like, we want to make sure that our community is being heard. And I think that's part of, like, as board members, we want to make sure our community is being heard. And then the other part for me is also like, when we hear certain things and we don't know the answer, it's also, also nice to kind of know what is the answer. Like, how, because sometimes, I mean, so with that said, I find that if there's, there are topics that are kind of heavier topics, that having something in the Friday memo to help us all understand the topic would be more helpful than to have me forwarding every single email that I am responding to. So I think I would lean more toward not necessarily forwarding every email at my response, but maybe if there's topics, like we're seeing, hey, we're getting a bunch of these emails about a topic A. Can we please put something in the memo about, you know, our answer? Because it doesn't, in some ways, it doesn't make sense to, for me to, in my mind, to forward every single response. And depending on the time of the year and what's happening, sometimes there's a ton, sometimes there's not as many. But the main part for me was getting information to the board about what, about that topic. If it's something that we, we're like, hey, there's a bunch of these. Let's wonder what can we answer for the board? What can we, what information would help us as a board, as a whole, make a best, the best decision possible for whatever topic? So I see Sunita's hand still up. And then Tammy.
So, so as I think more about it, I mean, if your response is only going to be directing it to the staff, I mean, do we need to be back copied? Personally, I don't care then. But if I have still, I want to know what, what the answer is, a circle back would be nice from Dr. Balderas.
Tammy, or do you want to say something?
Just, you've been doing this for a while. And I think there'll be times throughout the year where you'll have several hundred emails that are robo-mails. Just be upfront. That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. But how, or maybe we can ask if we are curious about this. Hey, this came in our inbox to all the board members. I'm still curious about it, what the answer is, something like.
So it sounds like a conversation perhaps, and just let me know. And we can make sure we answer people's questions. Tammy?
Similar, you know, we're hearing from our community directly to us as board members. Four DB.
What is that?
It's the one where.
Oh, DB, sorry. I thought it was like a, I thought it was something else, DB.
Yeah, so it feels somewhat stifling that we can't have a conversation with a, a staff member. I totally agree that we are, don't act as individual board members. We're not going to jump in and solve any problems. But just like when we hear from other community members and we're able to, you know, direct that in the, you know, push that information in the right direction, it, it feels very stifling. And I, I can understand potentially, you know, some of the reasons, you know, there is a chain of command and that sort of thing. But it, it, to me, new in this role, it feels similar to hearing from other community members, you know, people that are passionate about our schools and have ideas. I just wanted to acknowledge that that feels very restrictive.
I think when, when we were talking about that particular one, in that, for those that didn't hear, it was D, communication with staff. And then B being the board member will not directly contact other district employees. Was, as new board members, when we were talking about that, what I remember was that there are, there were, there's, it was to, in some ways, I think it was to, what I remember was for, to us not go directly to, like Susan, to ask a question about HR. Because we have one employee. And it was more of like, let's talk to, like, hey, Dr. Balderas, I have a question about blank, whatever topic that was, instead of us going directly to our, like, leadership staff. Because in the past, past boards were going, it was different for past boards that were going directly that way. So I think in the wording of it, it might seem that we can't talk to people. Like, in that, it was, I don't know if we can address the wording because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, like, if that was the intent of that one. Like, we have one employee talk, asked our board, and they can get us the answer. At least for that is what I remember. And I think, and some of us have worked in the district before and have like just relationships with people in the district. So it was to kind of let us know about that too. Like, it's a board role now.
So you're clarifying that it really is sort of this senior staff that instead of us going straight to Mike with a question, we'd go to Dr. Balderas first.
That's what I was remembering. I don't know, what do other people remember about that one in particular?
That's what I remember too is, and I had a conversation with Mike about, I really, I might need more information. But what I want to do is talk to Dr. Balderas and say, I'd like more information. Would you like to join me? And is it possible for me to get more information from Mike? Do you want to sit down with me? Do, is it okay for him to give me some background information? So that we don't surprise each other when we get to a public meeting and we're not presenting, well, I heard in this private conversation I had with somebody, right? That's not fair because then we're not sharing information with each other so that we can all be collective in our decision-making. So I don't think it's supposed to be, I didn't take it as restrictive. I took it as, if we want more information, we are able to get more information. But if we're going to get information in partnership with Dr. Balderas, he needs the information because he's the one who needs to act on it, most likely because it's about operations. That was my interpretation, Amy.
Do we have any other comments? Or I think Sunita, you had your hand up at one point. I don't know if you still.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that was my understanding too. But my experience, whenever I have a question, actually it helps me because he connects me to the right person. And that really helps, makes it easier for me to get the answers. That has been my, my personal experience, so.
So, so I think just really quick to that end, if there's questions, I will connect you. And I don't need to be involved in those meetings, but just connect you to the right people so you can actually have a one-on-one or get your questions answered to be able to make a decision. I think that's, that's the goal, is do you have all the information to make a decision? Or to get clarity?
Okay, good. And Mike, is that your understanding of the wording of that too? Is that how I was over-reading potentially that section?
Or is there an edit that needs to be made to make that clearer?
Give an example of what it, does it mean, I guess? I had a, a board member in one district that wanted to hold a staff meeting in a high school by himself without signing into the school, nor having any administrator present to fact-find something that he had heard about something. And we as, at the board and myself pushed it back against that because that's not the role of a board member. So that's an extreme. But that actually did happen in one of my districts. No longer, one-term board member, but that was, but that's what happened, so.
I think there's an edit that's needed. If.
I can't hear you, sorry.
I think there's an edit that is going to be needed. If we're, if where we're landing is that as a courtesy and in order to keep the superintendent in the loop, since it is, it is their responsibility to understand the board's questions and to be able to provide the information necessary, that at a minimum, as a courtesy, the, the question will go to the superintendent who will then refer to the appropriate person. And people live with that?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, if I could just add that, it makes sense. Because the, I understand the interpretation. And we've talked about this particular item a couple of times. But like I said, there's a piece in here that leaves a, like, someone's gonna talk to me one day and I'm gonna have to finish that conversation before I could do any other step, right, with that information or that experience. And I'm not gonna not have that conversation if a person approaches me as an elected, duly-elected public official. I'm gonna have the conversation and then I'm gonna make the next steps that are appropriate and, you know, ethical. So I think that's where it gets fuzzy. And I think if we clarify that, it'll be.
Because we do speak to people, so. And that's, I haven't, I don't think it was an intent, I mean, we, I didn't hear that from Dr. Balderas. I didn't hear that from our board as an intent that we don't want to talk to people. Oh, one more comment from.
Yeah, quick comment. I appreciate you clarifying about Robert's rules and that really is sort of. And I want to acknowledge how I experienced the last meeting. And we had a fairly strict, I think, application of Robert's rules. And we got to a point where I think Melissa wanted to make, Dr. Potter wanted to make an additional point. And, you know, we had to like vote to, you know, reopen debate or, you know, whatever parliamentario rule, you know, steps we were following. And I experienced it as, I wanted to hear Dr. Potter's next, you know, one more point, you know, because we'd gone around twice already. So I don't know how, I like how we're doing this right now. This feels right to me. It doesn't feel like we've been, you know, going around twice. I think I've talked three times now. So I'm appreciating this form of dialogue and just wanted to contrast it to last time where I felt like debate was shut down a little bit and it didn't feel like we were fully hearing from everyone. So I'm glad to hear that that's how you're reading it. It's, it's just sort of a recommendation of like, you know, this is sort of how things can go. But I don't know, Chair Perez, how you're experiencing this right now. But I'm appreciating how we're hearing from each other.
I think that in the most part, I'd like to stick to the two-round robin or double-round robin for, for conversation, just to keep things moving in this case. And I think specifically when there's, that's helpful, I think, when there are more contentious issues. I think that it'll keep us making sure that we're actually following a process and we don't get confused of like, this time, I'm gonna stop her from talking. And next time, I'm gonna let Tammy talk, but I'm not gonna let. So in that case, on my, in my mind, it would be best to stick with a process so that it doesn't become some kind of favorite game. Or at least in people's mind, that would not be my intent. But probably need to stick to it a little bit better, I think.
And I think it goes back to our earlier conversation too about the work sessions. Because I think what happened last time was that we got new information that we needed to act on that we were really unfamiliar with. So it kind of put us on our heels as far as trying to gather information and make a decision within twenty minutes. And so I think that's where it became elevated in urgency. And then also it was really late at night. And so I think that's where that, getting the conversation in a more casual form in our work session where we can have those discussions, chew on it for a little bit, and then when we get to the work session, it's a duh-duh-duh-duh-duh. That is how I would hope that the Robert's rules help us move along in our work sessions or in our business meetings. And the work sessions give us a chance to have those more thoughtful conversations and considerations.
Sunita?
So I do believe, like, when I compare, we have a lot of things to cover in a short period of time, so the Robert's rules does help. But I also agree with Tammy in the sense, like, last time I did want to hear what Melissa wanted to say or Dr. Potter or Dr. Tammy wanted to say. So I was wondering, in a Robert's rule, is there, you know, like, sometimes one person may have really good questions and everybody else wants to hear. Can we give our turn to that person so that they can talk or ask more questions?
I think, I think that my understanding of it is that we don't, we would, we could, you can make a motion to actually continue the conversation, which is what we were trying to do at that point. And something that I wanted to also clarify in that, it was actually super helpful. Coming into that conversation, Melissa had actually given me a heads up that this is something that she wanted to have further conversation. So she and I actually talked through what Robert rules would look like to that it wasn't a surprise to Melissa or myself. And we had kind of, it still, it was lots of little, like, you know, little pieces of trying to figure it out. But I was trying to be respectful of Melissa. And I think that we need to honor people's opinions. And if we don't, you know, whatever each of you want to bring up, like, by following the rules and by her letting me know that this is something that was going to come up, by us talking through Robert's rules and knowing how we were gonna, it was kind of bumpy, but it was like we had, we were kind of, we had talked through it. I think that I, what I experienced was, it was kind of controlled in, in that sense. But it also, I don't know what your experience was, but that Melissa was able to bring up something that the board needed to consider that helped us have a discussion. And I believe that Robert's rules helped us move through the discussion in a way. the discussion in a way that, um, allowed us to listen and then also get to a point where the board was like, okay, that's enough. And that's what, this was helpful to get us to, yes, we want to hear more, but it's time to make a decision. So that's just my opinion. I don't know what you think, but.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree with that. I, my mind was more a clarification question in the sense that when we are going for the second time and I don't have a question and can I give my question to Melissa or whoever had a question? That was my clarifying question, but I assumed I cannot do that, so.
Um, anything else before we move on? Cause I think we do, we have one more item.
I just want to clarify the edits that we would make before we bring back next time. So the first one under four CE would be to remove the blind copy to the board and instead would acknowledge receipt, uh, refer to the superintendent. And would it be acceptable then if we allow the superintendent to use their discretion regarding patterns and information necessary for the board to hear and that would be reflected in the, included in the Friday memo? Is that what we're looking for?
I would say Friday memo or another way that he might, because sometimes the, another option might be that, oh, wow, everybody has this question or this is really important. So he might choose to do like small meetings with us. So I don't want to limit it to the Friday memo or because something happened.
Okay. Well, communicate it in some manner, yeah. And then.
No tweeting.
Tweet it. Yeah, that'll be effective. Um, and then the, the other edit has to do with, um, contacting the superintendent, uh, when there's a request for additional information and the superintendent then will refer to the correct person.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. We will take care of those edits and bring those back in November and hopefully be good to go.
Thank you so much for your time. We've appreciated, I've appreciated you and Erica helping us through that process. I think that it's nice to have somebody from the outside leading us in that work. So I really appreciated your support.
Happy to do it and Carrie's been incredibly helpful, so.
We gotta move them up in the agenda because these charges and by the hour rate.
He came early. He came at five thirty. But, and we do have our, um, we have our, um, board evaluation process that we'll need support with too, by the way. So, okay, thank you. Um, now we have, um, Camilia again with some discussion on some policies, our board policy revisions that will be coming up for our next, um, November 28th meeting.
Good evening, Board. Um, I'm gonna go through a brief description of what we have here tonight for you on first reading. Thank you. Hate that thing being up so close. Um, again, these are policies that we are working through from OSBA recommendations based on changes to either Oregon law or federal law that have happened over the last, um, year or two years as we are working through that backlog. Um, the first policy in the grouping is, um, a revision to our communicable disease policy, uh, changes by OHA, added COVID-19 to the, the list of, um, excludable, uh, ailments, communicable diseases. Uh, so we have adjusted that, uh, wording to acknowledge that. There were some other, uh, pieces of the model policy as well that we're just continually trying to get our policies back in alignment with the model policies on that one. And then I'll pause so I can answer any questions about that one specifically. Okay.
Any questions on that one? Thank you.
Great.
And gone.
The next one that we have for you in the packet is, um, board policy GBEDA. Uh, this is, uh, related to drug and alcohol testing for our transportation personnel. Um, there have been some changes to the federal laws around, um, tracking and reporting of, uh, testing done on folks that have ACDL, um, whenever there is an incident, um, and it's quite extensive, which you will see in both the policy and, um, the administrative regulation, particularly the AR, which is why we're recommending a delete on that and a wholly new, um, adoption of that, uh, that AR. All right. The next one that we have for you is GCBDA, GDBDA. This is, um, revisions to the family medical leave policy. Um, this takes into account, um, additions based on the paid family medical leave, uh, insurance that has come into effect and is now active, um, as well as some language revisions to get our model policy up to, um, uh, alignment. Um, we are recommending to delete the, the old and replace with, uh, this new policy since there was just a lot of different revisions. And then we have.
Oh, I did have a question. Go ahead.
I did have a question. I think you addressed it already, um, but it's about the part-time employees. Can you just, in that policy, it does point out the 0.625 FTE faculty and staff. Is that the, that's the one, right? That? For paid family medical?
Yeah, I'm trying to look and see where, where you, which, where that verbiage is that you are.
So while Camilia is looking for, uh, the exact verbiage, um, we'll note that this is an Oregon law. It isn't discretionary to the local school district. This is in place now Oregon-wide and it does apply to most employees in Oregon, including part-time employees. It does not exclude part-time employees. Um, and it, it is, I believe, um, anybody who, uh, who earned at least a thousand dollars the previous year. So that's a very, very small, uh, part-time amount would, uh, would exceed that amount.
So, um, Dr. Potter, I'm not seeing where that, um, where that fractional language is in the proposed, uh, policy. Um.
Well, it's not that one. So, um, okay, thank you. Um, I just did want to make sure that our part-time folks all come.
Yes, that is a great question and, and really all the way down to some of our casual labor. Anybody who earns a thousand dollars or more is going to be eligible for the paid family leave and that's through, um, the state.
That's right. And an employee who works five hours a day would be working 0.625 time, I believe. Um, and, and that would not exclude them from participating in this.
Okay, great. Thank you. I had one question. It was, um, just clarification. So as these changes happen, that seems like a contract piece too. Like, uh, is that when in union negotiations, we'll just kind of edit that piece, fix that piece in the contract or is it not, it just, uh, the contract says just family leave, follow the rules in the contract? I think that's what it was.
Yeah, not necessarily. Um, certainly we have our bargaining agreements that are coming into success or bargaining and that could certainly be a topic that is brought up. There are a lot of different factors related to the law. Um, there's nothing in the contract currently that is, um, in opposition to the law. So there isn't an immediate need to make any changes to either of our bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then we have for you the IIBGA. Um, this is our electronic communication system. I feel like the title is a little bit archaic as we are going through and you'll see the, some of the language changes here are really to change things to using social media as opposed to electronic mail and some of the old words that we would use. Um, but they don't make a suggestion about the title of the policy, which feels a little, little old school. Um, just minor changes in there to, to update some of the, the language.
Any questions or comments on that one?
And then the, the last one that's kind of, it's tied to the earlier one. This is the student companion. So it's, uh, JHCC. Um, that language again is being updated, uh, cleaned up to the model policy, updated to reflect COVID. Um, and then you'll see that the AR is also in your packet. Um, the recommendation from OSBA is to delete the existing, uh, adopt the, the replacement version of it. And this is one of those ARs that the board does have to adopt.
Are there any policy changes that we need to consider with the, oh, this is, okay, never mind. I guess, um, student body handbook, would the electronic communication system changes for students? Cause it was adding a few more things about social media and stuff.
I think it's just, we were just changing the terminology that we were using about social media instead of calling it, um, let me see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't think we need to, yeah, social networking sites versus social media. So, yeah, so I, I, our, um, student handbook is probably more up to date than this language.
Okay, thank you.
But that's a great, that's a great question.
Any other questions on that? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
That is also, Sunita raised her hand. So we'll have, um, we'll vote for approval on the next, um, November 28th meeting. So this was our final presentation. Last thing on the agenda is comments and committee reports from board members. Um, would anybody like to go first or does anybody have a comment they'd like to make? Go ahead. Oh.
I just want to, uh, thank you. Um, acknowledge, uh, my gratitude for the previous board's work on, um, taking a close look at the SRO program and implementing changes. And, um, we're starting our third month of school and I'm looking forward, um, to hearing from the city. Um, their, their monthly reports will hopefully be coming out soon so that we can, um, that we can assess the changes that have been made and make sure that we're still happy, um, that we're headed in the right direction, um, to meet the, the goals that we have set out for this program. So I just want to, um, send my appreciation to the board members that are, are still here from last year and, and the ones that have gone on to do other stuff because that was really important work. So I really wanted to thank you guys for that. Um, I also want to echo Dr. Valderras's, um, um, concerns about, you know, our community and, and how many of them are hurting right now because of what's happening in the Middle East. Um, and I really appreciate how the district is really stepping up and, um, acknowledging that hurt and wanting to make sure that our, our students and families feel physically safe and emotionally safe. So that's really important and I'm, uh, applaud you for, for your comments and the way you're handling this in, in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Melissa and then Sunita?
Oh, I wanted to do a quick thank you to the, uh, district for organizing our, um, program tour on Friday. It's a lot of work to get us all organized. We had a very good timeline. Um, we were on time. We're, um, but it was a very efficient and, um, fun way to get to see the amazing work of our IT department, transportation, nutrition services, facilities, maintenance departments, our flex online, clothes for kids, make it any vento programs. And then also, um, a quick shout out to the Office of Equity Inclusion for hosting the Community Partners Equity Summit. Four of us were able to go and it was such a great representation of our community and our teachers and our classified staff coming together. And I'm looking forward to more opportunities like that to bring our community and our administrators, um, together to learn from each other. So thank you. I know it's a lot of work and I just have a lot of gratitude for all of that. Thank you.
Um, Sunita and then Ugana?
I want to thank, uh, the staff and Dr. Valderras for, um, really, um, bringing the community. We, I, I had the opportunity to go to the community workshop too and, um, Tatiana, Josh Fritz, thank you for all the work that you guys did. It was nice to hear so many different nonprofit organizations all coming together and, um, actually seeing how we can work together with the district and that makes a big difference for our students. So thank you for that and I hope that's the beginning and we are going to continue and make it better and get the community involved in our educational journey with all of our kids. Um, and, um, thank you for all the hard work.
Um, Ugana and then Justice?
Yeah, so, um, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, I was opportune to attend the first, um, Beaverton Education Foundation meeting. And it was really, um, incredible to learn about the work that they do and how they help to fund some of our projects in our schools. And I just want to remind us that we are currently on the Answer the Call project. I don't know if you have been, um, receiving calls from some of our students. So if you do get those calls, please, uh, make a donation. And I also look forward to a time that they would actually give us a presentation because attending that meeting was my first time of learning about their work. And I've been on the board for almost two years or more than two years. I've never had anything from them. So I look forward to a time that we can invite, uh, the BF to come and give us a presentation about the work that they do. It would be really nice to, uh, get to know more about them. And, um, I also was able to visit, uh, Mellow Station. I always, I feel, um, whenever I go there, I always feel this and I must broaden to continue to advocate for them because Mellow Station has, is gradually turning into a heaven for our most vulnerable students. And I hope for a time where we can, where we'll be able to provide everything that they need. And, um, it was nice visiting them and learning more about what goes on at Mellow Station and some of the, uh, needs that they have. And hopefully someday we'll be able to meet all of them, fingers crossed. So that's it. Thank you.
Justice?
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, I was invited by the, uh, Mountainside National Honors, Honor Society students for their induction to give, uh, I guess a small, short speech and be a part of their ceremony. Um, it was a great time and I just want to thank the kids for asking me to contribute to their, uh, experience and, um, you know, uh, thank you for, you know, being honored students and doing your work, what have you. And, uh, it was a great time and hope that I helped. So, thank you.
Um, and in closing, I, again, the Equity Summit was great, best tour. I think the one piece I'll point out, um, is that I'm very excited, um, that, I don't know if, I'm excited that we're gonna have, that we're putting our reporting, uh, let me start over. Um, I, we believe, I think as a board, that there's no, no space for hate, um, in our schools and in the spaces within the district or even in our community, probably, I would say. I'll speak for myself. But, um, I'm excited that we're gonna have, that we're starting this reporting campaign. So Shelley, thank you to your team for getting us started. I know, um, that it's just the beginning because we, we want to make sure that our students are feeling safe, um, and experience belonging is part of our strategic plan, but it's not only that, but it's part of, part of our core values, I believe. So I'm excited to see where the campaign goes and I want to ensure that our students and staff, um, have a way of reporting, um, anything that hate that's happening. So thank you, um, for all that work and looking forward to learning more about what we're going to be doing, um, and how people can report. Um, any closing thoughts, Dr. Valderras?
Just really good board meeting. I think, you know, it takes a little bit of time for a team to gel and we're a team and it just, we're gonna continue to get better at these board meetings and these conversations. And I think it's just relational. It's about trust. It's about getting to know each other and as people and with our core, uh, as we do this hard work, because it is hard work. It, it's hard work and it's heart work. So, because it's, it's, it's our kids. So I just appreciate the board and your intent and, and your commitment to our, to our kids. So thank you.
With no other agenda items, the October 24th business meeting of the Beaverton School Board, um, is adjourned at nine forty-six.